Okay, welcome. Hello? Am I on? Can you hear me? No. Am I on now?
You guys bring your money?
Testing. Ah, there. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, I guess it's good evening, isn't it, by now? Another call, our meeting to order are the City Council and a roll call by our city clerk.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
We're going to have our pledge of allegiance and invocation by Reverend Jesse Ortiz, New Vision Christian Ministries International. Welcome Reverend Ortiz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Almighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. We ask that you bless this meeting and everyone present. May those that speak tonight speak with confidence and may they share their heart with clarity as they make their petition. We ask that you remind each and every one addressing this council of the common goal which lies outside ourselves. Let us not focus only on our personal gain or personal security, but rather the greater cause which includes the welfare of our friends, neighbors, community, and generations to come. We are thankful tonight for all those who are here actively participating in the development and care of this community. We are thankful for this wonderful and beautiful city and the people within it. We ask that you bless and give wisdom and guidance over this appointed council and community leaders. As they hear the words spoken by each person presenting tonight, give them discernment, lead them in the direction that we should take as a community. Speak to them as we come together on the personal matters here today. Let them also be reminded of the responsibility to judge and represent not only out of personal interest, but the welfare of this community. We lift each council member up to you this night as they come before you and your people. Tonight, we take confidence in the fabric that holds this community and nation together, and that fabric is love. Almighty God, we ask that you hear this prayer, examine our hearts, let your will be done as we come to give you thanks. Amen.
Okay, I have announced it regarding the Brown Act notice of simultaneous meeting compensation. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, there was no closed session today, and so the next thing on our agenda is our presentations. And we have a proclamation for the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the city of Vista. And I'll be down here and I'll come down and I'll read the proclamation. And accepting the proclamation are Bob DiMaggio and Roger Rowe from the Knights of Columbus and Laura Hallett, Teresa Matzenbacher, Kim Brettlinger, and Kimberly Morris from Downstown. So if you will all come up and I'll meet you down there and we will read this. Okay, we have a proclamation here for you, and I'm going to, I'll read it for you. Let me take this off. Here's a proclamation for you. It says, "Whereas the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive is October 19th, 20th, and 21st, 19th, 20th, and the 21st, 2012, and whereas over 550 councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for the intellectually disabled children and adults in California in this 25th annual drive, whereas all the money collected locally will be donated to Downstown. Intellectually disabled citizens, especially in financial times like these, need the support of the public so that they can develop and be productive contributing members of society. The Vista City Council offers the sincere appreciation and support of all involved with this candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 19th, 20th, and 21st, 2012 Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the city of Vista, and we urge all citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help the intellectually disabled children and adults in Vista and throughout California." So congratulations and good luck this week.
Thank you.
So, do you have Tootsie Rolls with you?
Yes.
I think our council has, oh, you have something to say? Go ahead.
It's in here.
Yeah. The Knights of Columbus of St. Francis Church and Downstown would like to thank Mayor Ritter and the City Council for this proclamation. Also, thanks should be given to Northgate Market, Stater Brothers, Albertson, and Northgate, and Walmart for their kind permission to let us solicit donations from patrons of these fine establishments. And I mentioned 19th through 21st will be 25th year in California where nearly 65,000 Knights will participate in this nationwide event. The Tootsie Roll program started in 1970 in Illinois and now takes place in 44 states, California since 1988. And I also have brochures. If you want to make a donation where you can get tax deduction, you can mail it in and you'll get a, you know, official letter of thanks and you can use it for your tax deduction. So, thank you from Downstown Knights of Columbus.
Would you like a Tootsie Roll? I would love a Tootsie Roll. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Would you like a Tootsie Roll? Thank you very much. Would you like a Tootsie Roll? Thank you very much. Would you like a Tootsie Roll? Thank you very much. Would you like a Tootsie Roll? Thank you very much. Would you like a Tootsie Roll? Thank you very much. Would you like a Tootsie Roll? Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Shall I give him a minute? Oh, 'cause that down there's not working? Maybe I didn't turn it on. We'll give them just a minute. Some of the speak, some of the speakers aren't working, so. Can you hear now? Mary Lou, can you hear?
She's, she's louder. She can't hear. Mary Lou can't, they can't hear.
Can, can you hear me in the back? Somebody shake your head. Okay, okay. Okay, so we're okay now? I see we have a Boy Scout troop here tonight, too. What troop number? Can they hear me? What troop number?
Can you hear it?
66?
76.
76. Oh.
726.
726. Maybe I need a hearing aid. Maybe it isn't the microphone at all. Okay. The next thing on our calendar is our consent calendar. What's your items? C1 through C6. So, if there's, and usually if, if one is pulled off and I don't see anything, is there anything pulled off here? If one is pulled off, we would discuss that, but we're going to, I would look for a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Make that motion.
Okay. It's been moved in second then, so. It's okay. That motion passes unanimously. Our speakers aren't working real well up here, so if we're, if we're a little rough tonight, you'll know why. So, the first item on our discussion agenda is our economic development plan update, and that will be Kevin Ham and Rachel Belt. They're going to take that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kevin Ham. I'm Director of Economic Development for the city of Vista, and with me is Rachel Belt. She's a management analyst in the economic development.
Kevin, can you guys hear him out there? No. We can't hear him up here either. Can you?
No.
Just a second, we're working on it.
Does this one work?
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break here and see if we can get the system working so all of us can hear.
Can you hear me?
My thought was, um, we have Kevin up here. I couldn't either. Even Vegas, you can't.
Far back, far back they can hear. The audience can't hear and we can't hear.
Yeah. Oh, much better. Yay. Okay. Back in order. Kevin Ham.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. That is much better. I'm Kevin Ham, Director of Economic Development for the city of Vista, and with me is Rachel Belt. She's a management analyst in the Economic Development Department. At the March 2012 City Council Goal Setting Workshop, the council listed business retention, recruitment, and expansion as one of their main priority items. The council last discussed economic development strategies in 2009, and today staff has several enhancements for your consideration. The update focuses on business attraction, business retention, business expansion, business assistance, workforce development, new revenue generating opportunities for the city, and regional and statewide collaboration. To date, the Economic Development Department and its program has been very successful. For example, the Vista Business Park has over 800 national and international companies, employs over 23,000 employees, and the vacancy rate is only 7.4 percent. As with any plan, modifications are necessary based on changing needs and the environment. Today, staff will briefly review our existing programs and present new programs for your consideration. Items that are new to the plan are highlighted in the attachment, Exhibit 1, and in the staff's PowerPoint presentation today. Business attraction is a key component of this plan. Focusing on attraction of revenue generating sources for the city is very important, those that employ Vista residents, and industries that provide a desired amenity to the city. This plan envisions incentive efforts for recruiting these types of efforts. This plan supports business development and helps foster the growth of existing businesses. It also recognizes that a robust and successful economic development strategy must now include a regional approach. There is no direct fiscal impact to the recommended action today. However, if the city council directs staff to implement some or all of the updates, there may be fiscal impacts as part of future actions relating to these items. Staff recommends that you receive this update regarding the city's economic development efforts and provide direction to staff. Now I will proceed with the PowerPoint presentation. So, as I mentioned, there are four, five items in the plan. There's business retention, expansion, and assistance. There's the attraction program, workforce development and placement, new revenue generation, as well as regional and statewide economic development efforts. An existing component of the plan is the Vista Cares Program. The Vista Cares Program is our communicate and assist to retain and expand Vista businesses. Currently, there are two components to that plan, where we go out with the mayor, a council member, the city manager, the economic development director, and the community development director to meet with our local businesses to see how they're doing and how we might be able to assist them. This has been very successful, and we've had a lot of great outcomes out of this. In addition, last year, we had our first business walk where 60 volunteers went out, had a simple 10-question questionnaire, and essentially took the temperature of the business community to see how it was going and what we could do to help them. We will be doing that again this year, and that will be on the 25th from 8 till 2:00. We also have a new business walk that we're working with the Vista Village Business Association, and that will be on November 15th in the morning. The two new components, one is a property owner meeting forum. We find that working with our property owners is very important in retaining businesses in Vista. So, for example, one company is Atomic Development. In working with that company, and we know those property owners very well, if a business is leaving, they let us know. They let us know why they might be leaving so we can work with that company to keep them in our community. So, we think it's important to meet with them annually, to sit down with them, to let them know that we care, that we care about the businesses in their place, and see what we can do to help them, and really just connect with those owners once a year. The other component is a business recognition component. Currently, the Chamber has the Heroes of Vista program, and this is something that we've been thinking of for some time, but pulling out certain industries, individuals, leaders in our business community to recognize them from the city's perspective, that we appreciate them and we recognize what they've done in the community. And I'm recommending that we implement this in cooperation with the Chamber's Heroes of Vista program. Any questions on those?
Any questions, council? Okay.
With regard to Strategy 2, continue the business ombudsman's program. So, many times, issues will come up in the business community. How do I do business with the state? SDGNE hasn't released the power to my new building yet. These are all questions that come up, and we help them frequently with those questions, talking to the right individual so they understand what they need to do to move forward with their operations. Strategy 3, support small business development and foster growth. We have partnered with the Small Business Development Center of North County to work with businesses to give them the information they need to be successful. One recent example are restaurants who participated in the Taste of Vista. They received free marketing assistance, how to better market themselves to their customers. So, not only did they get the exposure at the Taste of Vista, but we had the Small Business Development Center actually help them understand how they can market to the customers out there. With regard to Strategy 4, continue to partner with the Vista Village Business Association. The council has recently saw some of the successes when the VVBA has come before you in the last year, whether it's been their rod run or their barbecue event. They've been very successful, especially in this last year, bringing people into the downtown, and so we recommend that we continue that economic development component. The same is said with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber with the 5K has been very successful, the Strawberry Festival. These are all parts of our economic development strategy and plan, and we recommend that we continue with those. Strategy 6. So, one of the things that we heard the council talk about and that we see out there are small businesses and small property owners, how, looking at how we can help them improve the facade on their building. Now, I must say, this is different and would be separate from the program at the Vista Village Business Association. They would still keep their program in force, but there are specific locations around the community where we could improve the facade of a shopping center or a business. So, we're recommending that we set aside $75,000 this next fiscal year, and we'll come back to council with a plan and areas of focus for a facade improvement program throughout the city of Vista. Strategy 7, we recommend that we implement a PACE program. A PACE program is a property assessed clean energy program, essentially where a business is able, at no upfront cost, is able to put on solar panels or energy efficient systems at their place of business. This is primarily either for multifamily or businesses. It is not for residential operations. One other area that we've seen is business legislation. There are opportunities out there in our legislative platform that we have not taken opportunities to focus on yet, and that's opportunities where there might be legislation that would be beneficial to the business community, but also to the city. And so, we'd like to include in our legislative platform language that allows us to support legislation that is beneficial to the business community as well as the city of Vista, and also oppose legislation that is not beneficial to the business community or the city.
Kevin?
Yes.
Before we get there, council, would you like to comment on the retain and expand section, primarily on the two items, the facade improvement and the PACE program? Or would you like to do it at the end? I just thought as we go through the document, it might be easier to discuss those items as they come up.
Okay. Councilwoman O'Grady?
Thank you. Yes, I would. And in fact, I'd like to go back to Strategy 3, if you would. We talked about to support the small businesses, which, you know, I really think we need to support them more in our city since they're hit it so hard. How do we, how do we get them in contact with the small business development?
Well, again, our partners are the Chamber of Commerce and the Vista Village Business Association. So, for example, with regard to the Taste of Vista, Rachel and our staff really connected the Small Business Development Center with the restaurants. The VVBA has now taken that lead and connected their small retailers with the Small Business Development Center. There was a grant that was given to the Small Business Development Center specifically for tourism-focused activities, which are retail and restaurants in their eyes, and so they have monies to help them for free to put together marketing programs and attraction programs to bring customers into their place of business.
Okay, so, so you go to the place of business and refer them to this agency?
So, in this instance, working with the restaurants for the Taste of Vista, this was an added benefit. So, when we talked to them about what they would receive for participating in the event, we let them know that they'd also receive this free training and education on how to market customers. Many times, if I have a small business come in and talk to me, I'll see if they have a business plan, see where they're looking at starting up, and if there's a particular need that they have or expertise that they need, I will send them to the appropriate party. Sometimes it's the Small Business Development Center, sometimes it's SCORE, sometimes it might be funding opportunities.
Okay, okay, so you're kind of the middleman, if you will, between those agencies that are available to small businesses as they come to the city? And the Chamber and the VVBA are also aware of these other agencies, too?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'm going to continue with some other questions that I have. If we go on to number four, I became aware of an event that's coming up in a couple weeks. I guess the Guild for the Microbrews are going to hold an event downtown and...
Yes, there's a Blues and Brews Festival that they're planning.
And how's the city participating in that? How are we helping them get the word out?
The city looks at it from a special event perspective. If, in fact, many of their events in the beginning don't necessarily make money, but they bring people into the downtown. So, through the bid, if, in fact, they lose money on that event, we will help cover that cost when they do a reimbursement. That's one of the ways that we do it.
Okay, is it also an opportunity to use our website for anything that's hosted within the city, too? And are we taking advantage of that?
It's certainly possible, but we do have a lot of requests to use our website from a number of nonprofit groups throughout the city, so it's difficult to turn some down and not others, but we can look into that.
Okay. I'm just thinking for the business components. Then when we go on to number six, the facade improvements, I think it's a great idea. I'm a little reluctant to say that I'm excited about maybe doing something in the South Santa Fe Corridor because we have longer range plans for that, so are we kind of holding back on those particular businesses?
So, the South Santa Fe Corridor is within the area that the VVBA works on a facade improvement program, and currently there's restriction for monies in that area because we don't know what's happening with the buildings and where things may be going. So, they currently don't use any money, nor would we use any of the $75,000 right now to improve that corridor. As things change, that might be an area we focus on, but one example that we've talked about is the Von Shopping Center, some of those businesses in that, that specific area, as well as the Albertson Shopping Center on the south side of the freeway.
You're talking about the Von Shopping Center. You just brought in a new agent.
Harbor Freight.
Yeah, I was down there the other day. They were an opening, had great business going on. Last one I would talk about, number seven, and that is the PACE program, again, allows commercial and multifamily the opportunity to use the city as a middleman for funding. Is that what we're talking about here?
So, there are three separate programs out there. The funding mechanism is either third-party lending or pooled bonding sources. There are two programs that are currently in operation. One is called California First.
Okay. Okay. So you're kind of the middleman, if you will, between those agencies that are available to small businesses as they come to the city? And the Chamber and the VVBA are also aware of these other agencies?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to continue with some other questions that I have. If we go on to number four, I became aware of an event that's coming up in a couple of weeks. I guess the Guild for the Microbrews are going to hold an event downtown and...
Yes, there's a Blues and Brews Festival that they're planning.
And how's the city participating in that? How are we helping them get the word out?
The city looks at it from a special event perspective. If, in fact, many of their events in the beginning don't necessarily make money, but they bring people into the downtown. So through the bid, if, in fact, they lose money on that event, we will help cover that cost when they do a reimbursement. That's one of the ways that we do it.
Okay. Is it also an opportunity to use our website for anything that's hosted in front of the city too? And are we taking advantage of that?
It's certainly possible, but we do have a lot of requests to use our website from a number of nonprofit groups throughout the city. So it's difficult to turn some down and not others, but we can look into that.
Okay. I'm just thinking for the business components. Then when we go on to number six, the facade improvements, I think it's a great idea. I'm a little reluctant to say that I'm excited about maybe doing something in the South Santa Fe corridor because we have longer-range plans for that. So are we kind of holding back on those particular businesses?
So the South Santa Fe corridor is within the area that the VVBA works on a facade improvement program. And currently, there's restriction for monies in that area because we don't know what's happening with the buildings and where things may be going. So they currently don't use any money, nor would we use any of the $75,000 right now to improve that corridor. As things change, that might be an area we focus on. But one example that we've talked about is Devon Shopping Center, some of those businesses in that specific area, as well as the Albertson Shopping Center on the south side of the freeway.
You're talking about the Von Shopping Center. You just brought in a new agent...
Harbor Freight.
Yeah. I was down there the other day. They were an opening with, had great business going on. Last one I would talk about, number seven, and that is the PACE program, again, allows commercial and multifamily the opportunity to use the city as a middleman for funding. Is that what we're talking about here?
So there are three separate programs out there. The funding mechanism is either third-party lending or pooled bonding sources. There are two programs that are currently in operation. One is called California First, and the other one is called California Pace. The last one is one called Y-Green that is not currently operational. In short, what these programs do is they allow the company to install solar, energy-efficient systems at their place of business and attach that to their property tax. So let's say it's over a period of 20 years. When they sell the property, that would go along with the property tax. So the way they would pay for that improvement, essentially would be like a loan, would be through a property tax assessment as a line on their property tax bill.
Okay. I've been approached by a vendor for one of these programs. We're not necessarily saying that we're going to go with any particular program or going to look for the best deal that works for the individual.
That is correct. There are different advantages and disadvantages to each. One of the programs that's not currently operational says that they can have a lower interest rate, which would obviously be beneficial. Others can get the source of revenue to the company more quickly. So depending upon the needs of the company, they might choose any one of the three programs. And I would say that we would bring back to you as soon as possible whatever program is ready and willing to provide resources to our local companies. But as the additional ones come online, we'd also bring them to you. And really, it just requires becoming part of the JPA.
Okay. And in our approval tonight, I guess the question is, most of this will be done at the staff level, the facade improvement grant opportunities, the PACE opportunities. You're not going to come back to our council on every one of these. Really, we're looking at the entire package tonight.
Yeah, the ones that are underlined and highlighted are the ones that we'll be bringing back to you. Some of them we may not need to bring back. We'll bring back, for example, the legislative platform.
Okay.
During the legislative platform, with regard to the facade improvement program, we're going to have to develop strategies and areas of focus that the council supports, and we'll have to bring that back as a line item in the budget.
I think the recommendation would be that once, if the council does approve a facade improvement program, that at that time, staff would go ahead and manage it from the administrative level. And each individual facade improvement would not be coming back before the city council, unless that's something the city council wanted to see.
One last question, and I don't know if it's on here, but it deals with a larger opportunity for us to take over some of the redevelopment properties in some type of corporation. Is there a possibility there?
Are you speaking of a community development corporation?
Yeah.
So I see a community development corporation as being a mechanism to implement economic development and redevelopment. We've had VITA in the past, which was the Vista Economic Development Association, which was a public-private partnership. This is just another mechanism to implement the tools of economic development. So a facade improvement program could be under this, but it just provides some additional ways to implement programs. So whatever tools we decide or programs we decide to implement, we can do under the model we currently have or under a community development commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Johnny Aguilera, followed by Frank Lopez. And I also have a speaker, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Gronky covered a lot of the questions I had. I just wanted to clarify, though, on Strategy Seven, that my understanding is there's no cost to the city by doing this and essentially no risk to the city?
There is no risk, I understand. I would leave the exact response to that to the city attorney, but I have been told that there is no risk. There are very few costs to the city. There is a little amount of staff time. Each of the programs are different. So, for example, two of them have some type of reimbursement for the minimal amount of staff time. One might provide up to $10,000 a year, and the other provides something less than that, but it's not much at all.
The programs will have to be individually evaluated at such time as before we bring them to the council, but it is generally said they involve no risk to the city, but one always likes to look at the details.
Thank you.
And I might add to that, that if there is risk to one of the programs, we probably wouldn't be recommending that to the city council at this time.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hamm, how long will it be before South Santa Fe is actually completed or even started?
I think I'll take that, Mr. Hamm. We don't have an answer to that, Councilman Lopez.
You don't have a time, correct? Can it be five years, 10 years?
It'd be a guess if I gave you anything. As a result of redevelopment going away, I think the overall game plan went out the door. What we are going to do is focus on the housing program...
Okay.
...and the housing opportunity on South Santa Fe to hopefully jumpstart what we think should be a prosperous future. But until it gets jump-started, until we find out if the development community is willing and active to be able to work with us, we won't know or won't have a timeline for you.
But we definitely know it's going to be several years.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. So in this facade that you have here, you have $75,000. You just mentioned that we don't want to do anything south of certain streets, correct? Is that what you just said?
I was going to say, I think what was mentioned is that there's a game plan for South Santa Fe, and I think council might be reluctant to put money into an area that we're hopeful that private development will come into and develop for us without putting money into a building or a facade that three, four, or five years later would be improved.
So what you're saying is that some of those buildings that are in bad shape now, let them go for another five years so they look bad. So instead of spending maybe a little bit of money, including some paint, to paint some of those, I own property there, and I would never ask the city, not now anyway, to even consider I getting money from them for painting my building. But do you want to continue, this council wanted to continue, to go down that street on Santa Fe? Or not, but you can in North Santa Fe because it's for South Santa Fe, to look at some of those buildings that need painting? So are we going to go for the next five years, 10 years? You know, some of those people, you know, with redevelopment, waiting for redevelopment to do something, and now it's not going to happen. Now, some of them are struggling, and so you're saying that you don't want to even spend any money on paint?
Maybe we could come back and, maybe there could be some things that they could use on South Santa Fe, like maybe paint, but maybe not major improvements.
Nothing major, but...
But wait, wait, but maybe we could come back with some different areas where we could, like maybe in the downtown, there'd be certain things that you could do, maybe for different areas. We could do different things for different areas, and maybe we could come back at a workshop and look at that. Would that be...
But the thing is that, another time, another time, when, another time. We're here now, you know? It's just, we should take care of, we should take care of this now to decide whether some of that, or explain something to me that, when this would come back again to it.
And maybe I'd have Mr. Hamm comment on the CVBID facade improvement program and how, what its relationship is to Main Street in South Santa Fe and where it can be done at.
Yeah. So the VVBA oversees the Central Vista Business Improvement District, and so South Santa Fe falls within that zone. And the facade improvement program they have covers that area. I would say that we could work with them to evaluate before next fiscal year what might be appropriate in that area, something that might be appropriate for improving those properties. But in working with the VVBA, they have been in sync with the idea thus far that we didn't want to improve it, especially if that area was going to undergo reconstruction. They have discussed with us recently that there might be some changes they want to make, so that's a discussion we could have with them as next fiscal year comes up.
Well, I'm not looking to do facade. There's no reason to spend thousands of dollars on facades or rebuilding patios or whatever. What I'm saying is, so that we continue to, when your house gets looking kind of bad, you put a coat of paint on it so it looks good, so the rest of the neighborhood looks good. Let's do the same thing with Santa Fe. Put a little coat of paint on it. It's not going to cost a lot of money. And that way, our neighborhood, that way, we have changed that stigma that we have around the communities that, you know, Vista, no. Let's get on the ball. Let's do this. Now, another question. You have, you go out to the industrial park. You go frequently to the industrial park to see companies, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Now, you go, the mayor goes, and your staff goes, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much for doing business here. Some of those businesses have been here for 40 years, 30 years. What plan do you have? And let's say they're going out of business. Do you have a plan or a committee that goes out and says, "Thank you very much for being here 30 or 40 years. We thank you for this. That company paid taxes, paid a lot of money over the years. You have retention, you have expansion," but do you have thanks?
We do. As a matter of fact, as I was seeing earlier, we work closely with the VVBA and the Chamber, and we see implementation of that through our partner, the VVBA. So on the 15th, the VVBA is putting together a questionnaire along with the city, and we're going to walk door to door in the same way we do in the business park and talk to those businesses and see how things are going. And that's one of the ways that we do it.
I had a business that went out of business here a few, oh, four years ago, three years ago, and the business was here for, since 50-something, 1958 or 59. And he got, the man got too old, and he says, "You know, Frank, you're on a council. You know, I was here 45 years. Your city neighbor came and gave me a thanks for nothing." So, you know, you wonder, whoa, well, maybe there should be a little program that we do go thank those people at the end of their lives because it, you know, they did do a lot of good in this community. So let's look at that, okay, with the VVBA. Thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. Back on, it's still working. I think Frank, Councilmember Lopez, has a very good goal, and I think all of us would agree that we do want to make the downtrodden area along South Santa Fe look nice, but we're still in flux as to, you know, how this redevelopment is unwinding, what money and resources we have. And we need to talk a little bit about how we spend discretionary money, because at our budget workshop, we had a lot of priorities that we need to discuss and a lot of things that we need to do in the city with what little discretionary money we have. And I think this should be considered as one of the items, but I don't think I'm prepared right here at this moment to allocate funds to that. But I certainly would be amenable in the not-too-distant future to having some kind of a proposal brought to us with some dollar amounts attached and some scope of work that we could at least look at to make sure that stays nice and spruced up. With regard to the strategies that we've been provided with, and I think this is really a good summation of a lot of work and a lot of contact with our business community and with how to improve our retail image as well as our downtown image and overall city image. The one thing we talked, well, I was kind of curious, when you talked about people who have opportunities to go to programs or seminars to upgrade their restaurant skills or other retail skills, what, do you have any, do you get any feedback from how that goes, the participation level, if they feel that it's been a successful boost to their business? Or what kind of feedback do you get on those?
Depends on the program. This program with the Small Business Development Center is fairly new, but we in the recent past have actually put together a propensity study for the businesses in the downtown. So when the city put together the list of businesses that would best match our psychographic and demographic profile in the community, which allows us to go out and recruit specific retailers, out of that data comes information that would be helpful to our small businesses in town. So, for example, if someone buys jeans, do they buy Levi's or do they buy Lees? That data we've given to the small business community, and we've heard feedback that that's been very appreciated.
Good. Good. The other thing, the workforce development and placement, I see that this has been going on since '09, and, you know, this has been a bad economy for employment and everything. But given our strategic location and some of the vibrance of our business park, have we had much success that we can tout from some of this, the outcomes of this program?
You bet. So that item's coming up, but let me jump to that right now. So we have two components to that. We have the One-Stop Career Center, where individuals within our community can go find out what jobs are available and what training is available. That resource is provided through a partnership. There's state monies, there's federal monies, there's the San Diego Workforce Partnership. The city participates. We gave them the space. So that's a good location for people to go. The other component was the Vista Workforce Roundtable, where we got together with businesses in our community. And the idea was to find out what were the emerging jobs for our Vista residents and train them for those positions. As we went through this challenging economy, the employers really didn't show up to the table because they didn't have needs to fill at that time. And so the service providers, meaning the junior colleges, the colleges, the lifelines, kept on coming to the meeting. And so we had a conversation with Tom Capizzi, who's the Global HR Director at DJO. San Diego's largest privately-held company is in Vista, a billion dollars a year. So this is a company that we work with and really take what they have to tell us to heart. And so we asked Tom, you know, with regard to the Vista Workforce Roundtable, is what we're doing helpful, and how should we best do it? Because the business community should know if we're providing these services to them, how can we best provide the services? The response from DJO and Tom Capizzi was, "You should do it at the subregional level." The cities are working together, the cities of Vista, Oceanside, San Marcos, Escondido, and Carlsbad, the 78 cities. And so we're working with the Vista Workforce Roundtable to bring that to a subregional level, and we have some individuals that have already stepped up and said that they will manage that and work on that. And Tom himself has said that he would be key to that process, and he would personally bring that to the CEOs through the North County CEO Roundtable.
Wow, that's, I, we have the potential to be a leader in this whole arena here, given our location and some of the business attractions that we have here. So I'm proud of you for staying on top of that. And I'm sorry if I jumped the gun to that item, but I just got ahead of myself.
We have two speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers now, too? Okay, first is Cliff Kaiser.
Mayor, Council, some might argue that I've been a little critical of your decisions here over this past year, and I must confess that I am not entirely pleased with all your spending decisions. But in this case here, I want to applaud you and the effort and the encouragement you're giving to the Economic Development Department. I see the results of their work with the Vista Village Business Association and the Chamber. And I like the changes that I'm seeing so far in these updates. I do have a couple of comments for your consideration. South Santa Fe, I know redevelopment's in turmoil and all that other stuff, but we have to do something now. You can take an old neighborhood and still make it look nice, okay? We put people down South Santa Fe for the Strawberry Fest 5K every year, and in some areas, when you're going down there, it's not the place that you want people going home and bragging about. Did you see what I seen in Vista when I was doing the 5K? No, you really need to, somehow, we need to figure out a way to make that South Santa Fe look good between now and when we have it redeveloped. PACE program for business is good. I've seen a couple presentations on this. It's also available for the residential community. It looks like a win-win for everybody. Business legislation and endorsing different, or commenting on different legislations, I would like to see the council comment on the propositions that are up before us now as voters and make recommendations like many of the other business organizations do. And the final comment is, there's other areas that impact the business community, and one of them I mentioned to you before, and that is the sports fees that have been imposed on the youth sports leagues. And the business impact, and we just got our financial report for our fiscal year in Vista Girl Softball, we lost $17,000 somewhat as a result of those new fees, but also because of the impact of those fees and the tournament cancellations. That's one thing. The other thing is all those businesses on South Melrose that normally have a very busy weekend when we run those tournaments, the Submarina, the Italian restaurants, the Nucci's, the things like that, all those restaurants on Friday night, on Saturday night, on Sunday afternoon, lost all that business because those tournaments went away because of those fees. So it's certainly a business impact there. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Are you still on the Chamber Board?
I am not.
Oh, you're not in...
I turned out in 2011.
You turned out as what, the president?
I was the co-chair in 2011.
So now you're running for council?
Indeed, I am.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gronky?
I'd like to ask a question of the speaker. Maybe you can clear up a point. It's a kind of a personal thing about your candidacy. I've talked to some friends... I, I've talked to some friends of yours and, and they were questioning whether or not you lived in the city or not. And I've investigated that and I've seen a couple of residents in, you know, given to you. So I just wondered, can you clarify where you live and how long you lived there?
I live at sixteen twenty Cailladuce in Vista. I've owned that home since the late nineties. I've been a businessman in Vista for the last twelve years, running a IT consulting business. My daughter's in Vista Girl Softball, I'm on that board.
Yeah, my question was, how long have you lived at that residence?
And I've been very active in the Vista Chamber.
I understand that.
You don't need all the, don't go through all the qualifications here.
Okay.
Just answer the question.
Yeah, answer the question if you could.
I've lived in that, that house initially in the early, in the late nineties and early two thousand, then most recently this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is John State.
We can go further with this question, too. Good evening, everyone. This is incredibly cool to be here to talk to you all about our community business. I have to say first of all that I totally agree with Cliff Kaiser about the fact that we need to make South Santa Fe look good. I think I've said in the newspaper and other places that, you know, when people come through our community, they don't see a prosperous community, they see a ghetto. I've counted with my wife, we've driven up the four major thoroughfares of Vista and we've counted one hundred and fifty-four closed businesses. And when we see that, it says that Vista is failing. You know, we may have a lot of investment, a tax, a tax base in the development of the South Vista Industrial Complex. And I go there all the time, it's very, very productive, it's excellent. But when you look at the rest of Vista, it's, it's terrible. And I don't know why smaller expenses are not put into the entire West Vista to East Vista corridor. On that one street, there's eighty-four closed businesses. And I think that there are many solutions to the closed businesses that we have here. If we filled half, half those closed places with businesses, that would create by definition four hundred jobs in Vista. And that would make a huge impact on our tax base, on our consumers, on our investors who have confidence in Vista. And I was actually going to ask my question. So much energy has been developed, been put into south the Vista Business Park, which I say is an excellent thing, but the rest, West Vista and the other parts of Vista have been neglected. Has this been a decision based on tax revenue, on ability to create change? That's my question. Is, is that appropriate to ask a question?
I suppose.
Okay, sir.
So, yes, we have two staff members in economic development and we focus our resources in those areas that we can.
Which is?
We work with the Chamber of Commerce and the VVBA in those areas that we don't have enough energy to cover and to the extent that we want. We have worked with several developers, several businesses for the areas that you mentioned. At the end of the day, the businesses make the decision. I think that one of the successes that you've seen is Vista Village. That was a focus of the city and an improvement in that area. We continue to work in the downtown. One recent success is bringing Mother Earth Bruko downtown.
Excellent.
That has brought a lot of traffic, foot traffic. The business right across the street, Urban, has told me that they may actually have to purchase another oven to keep up with the business.
They support me, by the way. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. State. This is not, this is not a conversation, he's answering your question.
Sorry, thank you.
You can sit, you can sit down unless you have another question.
No more campaigning, please.
Okay, moving on, I, I think we need to have direction for maybe the staff to come back with regarding the facade and bring that back to us and then also maybe on the pace issue. And, and they, someone said the pace was available for residential, but that wasn't our information.
Yeah, the program that we're focusing on is specifically for commercial and multifamily.
Okay, so maybe you could come back with a plan on that for us. Is, is that all of your report or did you have more?
I do have more.
There's more, there's two, three more sections. One is very brief and...
Okay.
So moving through this quickly, talking about business attraction, we are exploring the feasibility of a new hotel. That's something that we currently have in our program and we are doing. We've had conversations with many developers and different hotel groups. We've had conversations with many different auto uses coming to town as well as additional fine dining establishments. Strategy two, we have, we did the base industry analysis, that was the last update of the economic development strategy saw in two thousand and nine. There were several categories, eleven categories, that said would be best fits for the business park. And as the economy is allowed, we have worked to fill those in. Some of those companies are John Deere, Water, Apero, companies like that, that we've brought to town that match nicely with the existing business base we have, bringing jobs and revenue to the community. Strategy three, work with community, community development to amend the business park's specific plan. We've done that, we've brought that to you recently. That allowed some flexibility, both from parking. As you know, that a lot of businesses now are bringing business back to the United States. McCain is one of the companies in our business park that's doing that. And as they bring this business back, they have parking needs. And so the city changed the business park's specific plan to allow for more flexibility. And that's something that we've done. Strategy four, continue to utilize and publicize the Development Review Committee, what we call the RED Team, which consists of the, myself, the Community Development Director and the Redevelopment Director. When a use comes to us, let's call it living spaces was one of the uses, we sit down with them, see how we might be able to bring them to town, see how we might be able to move their project forward, clearly state to them what the requirements are and let them know what the timeline is. So this RED Team comes together and focuses on those projects that are key to this community that hit some of the goals that are important to us, bringing jobs and revenue and unique amenities to the community. So we used to have a incentive program, the, which was Council Policy five hundred dash one, which was called the Vista Economic Stimulus Program. That was in place for a few years, it ended in December two thousand and eleven. Now, not many people use that. And I'll have to tell you, it was very successful because what I find many times, having an incentive program, just by saying, just by showing that you have an incentive program, by working with the businesses and helping them with your RED Team, being clear with them what's required and what the timelines are, many times you don't need a financial incentive. And showing you have a financial incentive in those instances where a financial incentive will help, sometimes it's important. So one of the things that we recommend is bringing back to you a financial incentive program for uses that we would like to attract. Uses along Paseo Santa Fe, uses that bring a unique amenity to the community, ones that produce sales tax or TOT and make an effort to employ at least thirty percent of the population from Vista.
Kevin, maybe you can comment, too, on the Hyatt and the success we had with them and the, the letter we received from them.
So Hyatt is one of the companies that the Vista, that the city can really say they brought to town. We talked to several developers, showed them that location, that was going to be an office use before it was a hotel. We let them know from our Vista Cares visits that the businesses needed a hotel in our community for their customers and prospective employees to stay. So in working with the CEO, Scott Brown, we identified that location. They were able to build that hotel on time. And their developer said that in his many years of experience, over twenty years of experience, the contractor on that project had never worked, had never had a better experience working with the city. And that if he could do all of his future projects in the city of Vista, that he'd love to do that. So that's an example of how the entire city team came to bear, to assist this organization in building that location and getting it delivered on time.
I think we have, we have questions, I think, all on this incentive program or on the, so maybe we could start, end here for this and then go back. So I have, let's go in order here. Mayor Portem Gronky followed by Councilmember Aguilera.
I definitely like what you spoke, just spoke about, the incentive program. I think since the demise of redevelopment, we've just had to look for other options. And I think that's exactly what this speaks to. The, the topic of risk came up a couple of meetings ago and, and I, I didn't want to sound flippant about that, but I think, I think the city has positioned itself in such a way as to take some risk on some of the incentives that we do to try to gain additional companies and, and tax revenue and TOT. So, so I'm all on board on that. And if there's something that we can do to create incentives to bring large corporations and small mom and pop shops to town, then, then I think we need to investigate that and we need to be imaginative about that. The other thing I'd like to speak to, it deals with the business park transition. It appears to me that we probably lost some opportunities to Carlsbad and some other business parks by not transitioning faster. So if we can fast-track that a little bit, that would be wonderful. And if there's additional, I guess, I guess my point is if there's additional money available that we can gain as revenue, then maybe we should bring on additional people to make that happen even faster. Because there's inspectors or engineers or whatever that might be need, we might need, or even on a consultation basis if we can just bring them on. Because I think we need to start moving this along. And I think because of the recession, we need to position ourselves in such a way in North County that we can get it captured as much as we can.
Councilmember Aguilera followed by Councilmember Coles.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great program, I'm very supportive of this. Just a couple of questions. The city manager and I were speaking the other day and one of the things we talked about was gas stations, of all things. Is that, would that somehow fit into this at all? Because I know, I mean, it doesn't seem like a real desirable business, as Mr. Johnson and I were discussing, but it is beneficial to the city, it's a, an amenity. And, you know, with gas prices as high as they are right now, it would provide a lot of taxes. So how would that fit in?
Well, that would be under our attraction program where we talked about hotels and auto uses. And we might also look at providing them incentives. The city manager and I discussed that idea the other day. And so I've kind of been thinking about how primarily anymore those are not mom and pop uses, given the volatility of the marketplace. They're large corporations and thinking how we might be able to work with them. They definitely bring benefit from a sales tax perspective and thinking of how we might be able to work with them, to place them in key locations and especially fill empty gas station locations as well. And so that's something that we're thinking about, how do we make it work?
Yeah, okay. And then the other question I have regarding types of businesses, it seems like most of the businesses are, that you're talking about would be generating sales tax, which is good. And I know these types of businesses don't typically, or don't always generate sales tax, but what about high-tech businesses that employ basically employees that, that generate more income? Are we looking to try to attract those types of businesses into our business park? And do we have some sort of a plan to make, you know, create an incentive for those companies to bring their people? You know, because as they, they bring those people in, they look at Vista, they will, you know, eventually spend money in Vista. And, you know, we need to try to steal some of the stuff from Carlsbad, I guess, you know? Hate to say that, but I mean...
Don't, don't say that.
Okay, I won't say that.
And I think, I think Mr. Hamm, when he gets to the regional and statewide economic development efforts can touch base on the high-tech industry or the certain types of industry that regionally we can collaborate on.
Regionally, yes.
And speaking, you know, to employing local residents, currently over fifteen percent of Vista residents work in the Vista Business Park or the Vista community. And that's one of the higher percentages in San Diego County, but we want to see that increase. And so that's one of the reasons that an incentive, if we were to provide them, might go to a company that employs thirty percent or more of their population from Vista because we realize that investment that comes back into our community. They shop at those mom and pop stores, they go to the community locations, they support our local community groups. So that's very important.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles followed by Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I like the term attract rather than theft. But I, we are in a good position to do that. In fact, Patrick and I talked to a businessman who lives in Vista, used to be here, is in Oceanside, but said he'd like to come back to Vista. So Patrick and I are going to follow up on that lead. And he's got a vibrant company with nationwide contracts at his disposal. So, but the, the incentive program, I, is, if we can extend that to all aspects of our business of retail, you know, I, I too encourage that. I want to remind people that the, if, if you look at the Corcoran area ten years ago, that was, that looked worse than any part of, of Vista. And now it is a vibrant attraction in, in North County. And that was our plan for South Santa Fe until we hit this roadblock. And so that's still our vision, but again, we're not a, we don't finance business, we simply work as a, kind of a go-between to attract business and, and ease as much bureaucracy as we can to, to make it comfortable and attractive for them to come here. And we do continue to do that, we just don't have all the tools at our fingertips that we had six months ago. But thank you for keeping us abreast and, and staying ahead of the curve on these, these matters. That, I think, is what does help us to become more attractive than some of our other cities. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Hamm and Rachel for doing the work that you do. It's a small staff for a big job. And we appreciate that. We appreciate you working with the big, big businesses. But, but keep in mind the small business. Eighty percent of the businesses in, in the world are small businesses. So let's, let's, let's not forget about that. And, and let's not forget about that facade. Paint is cheap. And hopefully, you know, that when you come back, because this item's going to come back again, correct? Couple of weeks, month?
Yeah, that's, I was going to ask for that, for the, for them to bring it back with some specific programs and things.
Okay, so that way you, you have an idea what we want. So thank you for the good job that you're doing and hopefully we continue to attract those businesses because I hear nothing but a lot of good positive things out there in, in the industrial. Especially now you got the hotels. Before you had businesses, but you have people coming from all over the country, where do they go? They go to Carlsbad. Where do they eat? Carlsbad. So by keeping, by building the motels here, by doing those type of things, those people then hopefully, in those motels, hopefully that they'll, they'll work with our local businesses with flyers and things like that so that they can actually do, do well. I happened to run into a motel the other day, it's called Hilltop Motel, most of you know that on our Vista. That hotel has, the past has, has been terrible. Over the weekend, it was almost full and of good people. And so I think it's, it's a good thing that, that it's improving and, you know, it's, it makes our city look, look a lot better when things improve there. So, thank you.
So it's okay with all of you out, is it okay to ask about to come back?
Sure.
Okay, give staff direction for that. Okay.
Not, we'll be here all night.
So moving on to the next strategy.
So workforce development and placement, this is the one that I was discussing earlier. We have two strategies. One is the One-Stop Career Center. We're continuing that in partnership with the San Diego Workforce Partnership and the North County Lifeline. And then we're recommending, and I'll cover it a little bit more at the end of this presentation when I talk about regional and statewide collaboration, transitioning the Vista Workforce Roundtable to the regional subregional level. So new revenue generation ideas, we continue to think of ways to generate revenue for the city. One of the ideas that we're working on and we're evaluating feasibility to bring back to the council is a digital message board. Now on to regional and statewide collaboration. The economic development directors, the city managers and the mayors... The economic development directors, the city managers, and the mayors of the 78 corridor cities have been meeting about different ways to improve our economy. No longer can we work on economic development in our own little silo as a city. Those individuals who live in our city work in Carlsbad or Escondido, and vice versa. And so we are working on a strategy to bring companies to North County. We're coming up with a radius to attract businesses outside of. So for example, five miles wouldn't work, because we'd be taking a business from Escondido. We may decide that 40 miles is too near, that we might want to go after businesses that are in Arizona or Los Angeles. But we want to look at attracting the right types of businesses to our communities. Now each of our communities are different. A business that might work in Carlsbad may not work in Vista and vice versa. We all have certain advantages, and by working together, we're able to put a better face forward and have more businesses come to the region. We are also thinking about putting together a retention effort. For example, we have a very successful program when we go out and talk to our local companies. We go and meet with them and their CEO. But there are some companies that are owned by a company like Blackstone Capital. They're not in San Diego County. They're headquartered somewhere else. And so we can pull together our resources. Blackstone owns DJO. They also own the Golden Door Spa. They own any number of different companies in our collective cities. And so if we want to go tell Blackstone that we appreciate that they do business in our backyard, that we care about them and that we support them, it's difficult as a single city. Now we can come up with a strategy to go after them, to go to New York, to go to San Francisco, to go wherever they are to deliver the message to them. So again, working with economies of scale and more resources. We are also looking at a revolving loan fund. By working with the other cities, we have a better opportunity to access money. Now, and, and that could be a grant that could populate a revolving loan fund that allows us to lend out money to specific businesses that we want to recruit. As that money is paid back, then we have the ability to lend that to the next company that comes to town. This is a strategy that many communities use. It's easier and better to use along with several different cities. And the five cities working together have a better opportunity to access grant funding for this and deploy a program like this. And then we're also looking at developing a North County identity program. We need to come up with an image, a message. This collective 78 corridor, what is it that we provide? What are the benefits in locating here? What is that image? So as we market and we tell companies that we want them to stay here, what is that face that we put forward? So those are the initial strategies that we're currently working on. And I must say that there are any number of other efforts out there. There was, there is the POP effort, Prosperity on Purpose. There is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. But all of those feed into what we're proposing here. This is not separate from, from those efforts. We would be working with those parties, whether it's the San Diego North Economic Development Council, they'd have an opportunity to participate. But we know that these are important goals and programs that we need to implement, and we would be moving them forward.
Any more, any other questions? Do you have enough direction from our council on things?
I do. All right. And I will go through the last ones here. That's it.
So we'll be coming back before the council with the facade improvement program, the PACE program, as well as the incentive program.
Okay, so, woo. That took us a bit, didn't it? Moving on, and the next thing we're going to do, we'll go to our public hearings. We have actually four of them. The first one, public hearing number one, is the County Department of Environmental Health letter, the grading of the mobile food facilities. And so we'll open the public hearing, and it looks like Cheryl Mast is going to...
Does the council require a report?
Do you want to report on this?
Not for me.
No? Okay, we don't need a report, then I would, do you entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We want to close, did you want to close the public hearing?
Public, close, public, close the public hearing and make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Then I'll second it, yeah.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mast.
Second public hearing is a zoning code in Vista Business Park Specific Plan Amendment. We'll open that public hearing, and John Conley will, do you need a report on that?
Yeah, yes.
Patrick says yes.
Thank you, Council. John Conley, Community Development Director, wanted to bring before you a code amendment this evening that is a zoning code update. The staff has been tracking a number of inconsistencies and issues within our zoning code over the last several years. When we started to prepare the general plan update, which was adopted earlier this year, we've been tracking those issues that we need to resolve. So we have a comprehensive list of those amendments that include things like the parking code and single-family zones, second units, a number of things that we're going to come back to the council to discuss individually. But in that effort, we identified a number of things that are sort of cleanup items, and so we're bringing them all as a block tonight. So they're listed alphabetically in the staff report and in the resolution, and I'm going to cover them very briefly in the presentation alphabetically as well. And so if you have any questions, you can stop me along the way. The first is accessory buildings. We currently don't define what an accessory building size is. So in residential zones, we're clarifying that it's less than 50% of the floor area of the main building. The second would be guest house definition, and we're amending that to reflect that it's not intended for persons that are employed on the premises. It's only intended for people that live on the premises or their guests. We're adopting a change in the mobile home park zone to allow for pets, because that zone currently has no allowance for pets, and it's created some code problems. So we're allowing one dog and one cat per space, which is consistent with our condominium requirements. In the R1 zone, we're amending the requirements to allow for a guest house in that zone without a minor use permit. Currently, a property owner within the R1 zone has to apply for a discretionary permit that takes several months to process to build a guest house, which is defined as living space and bathrooms. It's not a second unit with a kitchen. So as long as they meet setback requirements and meet the square footage requirements that are in the zone, they can do it as a permitted use and remove the minor use permit requirement. In the commercial C1 zone, we're amending the code to clarify the difference between car rental as a primary or secondary use, or some inconsistent language in the code right now. We're amending street backs, I'm sorry, street setbacks from arterial roadways, because we have a requirement right now that any project along an arterial roadway has a 20-foot setback. And as a result of the general plan update, we've adopted a mixed-use zone, and in the downtown specific plan, we allow for zero setbacks at the street line. So we're adjusting to, to account for those changes. We're adopting some outdoor lighting standards that we've historically used in our project reviews for commercial and residential developments. In new development reviews, we'll have numeric standards. We're amending our refuse collection and storage requirements to account for standard size of trash enclosures, and we're requiring roofs on those enclosures consistent with stormwater requirements. We're adding a new code section addressing the common use of adjacent parcels under certain circumstances to allow for accessory uses to be established on adjacent parcels where there's a primary use established. We're amending our condominium housing requirements to remove an allowance for a waiver of a tentative map, because it's inconsistent with the Subdivision Map Act. We are adopting regulations for site development plan process, which is the process that we use to do discretionary review of new development. In those applications, there are an exempt category of projects that don't have to go through the formal process and go to the planning commission. Those are typically reviewed by staff at the administrative level, and so we're clarifying what those use requirements are. We're amending some titles in the zoning code to clarify the difference between special uses and minor use permits. And finally, we're amending the Vista Business Park Specific Plan to remove limitation on outdoor storage that was missed when we brought the business park plan to you about a month ago. And that completes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
We have one speaker, and then, okay, we'll take our speaker first. It's Steve Vander Scav.
Good evening. Three weeks ago, in these very halls...
Can you speak into the speaker?
So we can hear you.
Sorry, didn't want to give feedback. Three weeks ago, in this very hall, the planning commission threw a public hearing to discuss all of these amendments. It was a grand old time, there was a no-host bar and a girl jumping out of a cake. One person showed up to the public hearing, that was me. And I spoke and said a whole lot of words, and there wasn't really a whole lot of discussion, and it passed unanimously by the planning commission. I've boiled down my presentation to a, to a brief nutshell of what it is.
Can you do that in three, can you do that in two minutes and 24 seconds?
Sure, okay. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question? That's our, that's the quickest one ever. Do you have any comments down here? No questions or anything?
No, that was good, though.
Okay. I guess my, my only question I had was, I'll do it quickly here, but it was on the, the guest houses and the second uses, and I don't know, was there a state requirement that we have to have guests, allow guest houses or second units now for...
There is a state requirement that we have to allow for second units in residential zones, and, and we do have that listed as one of the amendments that we have to bring back to the council and address in a comprehensive nature. We've had a number of problems implementing the requirements that we adopted initially in response to state's allowance. But it, it hasn't seemed to cause too many problems. We haven't made any adjustments today. Today, the difference was for guest houses, which is without a kitchen.
I know, but why would you not allow a guest house to have a kitchen?
We define guest houses and second units as different structures. A guest house is bedrooms and bathrooms that are intended for guests of the main residence. A second unit is a whole separate second unit with a kitchen on the same lot that you could rent or lease to another family.
So is that, and that's the difference between the two?
Correct.
But other than that, they're pretty much the same?
Pretty much the same. There's some size differences, but the idea is that you can, it's an income unit as a second unit, whereas a guest house isn't intended to be leased or rented. We have restrictions that we place on the title when we approve a guest house that state that.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's the difference. Okay, then I'm okay. Then I need someone to close the public hearing and make a motion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve this item.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our third public hearing, which is public hearing number three, conduit financing for Los Robles Apartments. And I believe John Meyer will give us a brief report on that. So we'll open the public hearing. And then I have one speaker, when we get to that.
Good evening, mayors and members of the city council. Foothill Oaks Housing Associates is seeking tax-exempt bonds to acquire and rehabilitate the Los Robles Apartments located at 1475 Oak Drive. The project will be owned and operated by Foothill Oaks, which is a limited partnership associated with Community Housing Works. The project, the project is currently covenant-restricted affordable housing project and will remain an affordable housing project after the rehabilitation. The rehabilitation will include significant upgrades to the interior and exterior of the units, as well as the common areas. Tax-exempt bonds are part of the proposed financing package for this project and are being issued by the California Municipal Finance Authority. The bonds are secured by the project, and the payment is the obligation of Foothill Oaks, with no obligation or liability to the city. Neither the city nor the commission is making a financial contribution to the project. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow members of the public to comment on the use of tax-exempt financing. That concludes staff's presentation.
Mayor Portem Grunkie.
Yeah, and my question is, is why are we going through this action? Why is there a transition going on? Is it because the management company that's presently there is not doing this efficient job?
No, I wouldn't characterize it that way. Community Housing Works, who's been associated with the property for several years, is going through this procedure to find a funding source in order to rehabilitate, to upgrade the, the units. Because the tax-exempt financing is, is at, originates with the federal government, the tax-exempt, the, the internal revenue code requires that a public hearing be held so people can comment on the use of tax-exempt financing. Instead of having that public hearing in Washington DC, they require it to be held in the local jurisdiction.
So, the way I understand this, there's no cost to the city?
That is correct.
You improve the property, you're not displacing the present residents?
That is correct.
So it's all positive?
Very much so.
Okay. Okay, and why isn't this happening more often, then?
It takes organizations like Community Housing Works and the availability of these other funds.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. So as they're redoing them, what do they do with the present people that are in there?
I would, there are representatives from Community Housing Works in the audience, and that question would probably be best served. I don't know if there's any actual...
I, I don't need to listen, you know, to, I just, what I want to know, are they going to be taken care of?
Yes.
Okay. Now, will the, will the rents increase, or about the same, or what's, what's the deal with that?
It's, it's my understanding that through this process, there, there will be a, a minor slight increase in the rents, but they are still covenant-restricted.
What's it, what is it, 50 cents, a dollar?
Again, I would defer the exact amount.
Okay, so, but it's not going to be...
There are no significant increases as a result of this rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you, that's all I know.
Okay, we have one speaker, Sylvia Martinez.
Just real, real quick, is it the whole block there of apartments?
Uh, yes.
76 units?
Yes.
It's the whole, whole block, right?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Martinez, and I'm here today from Community Housing Works to talk about this project and answer any questions that you might have. As you know, Community Housing Works has been working in the city of Vista on affordable housing projects for well over 15 years. And we've been associated with this project for over 15 years. Even though the project is not owned by us, we have one seat on a board that is majority-controlled by the tenants. It's a nonprofit board. When the units are being rehabbed, we call this rolling rehab, they're out of the, their unit for hopefully seven, no more than 14 days, and they are compensated for that time that they're out of their unit. They're given money for lodging and for food. In addition, the rental impact has been very carefully considered. The income levels at the property are not going to change. They're still going to be at, most of them are at 50% of area median income, which is quite, quite low. When the new tax credit rents come in, there will be some adjustments, but each current family is eligible to receive a Section 8 voucher, that if there's an increase in their rent, that will assist them in paying that. So the net impact is very slight, if any, on them. They will be paying their existing rent, or 30% of their income, which is the HUD definition of affordable, 30% of their income.
So you're going to just rehab the inside?
Turn on your microphone, Frank.
Uh, sorry. So are you rehabbing the outside, too, like landscaping and making it look up-to-date?
If you've driven by the property, you know it's looking tired. It's looking tired.
Yes, it is.
It also has a lot of grass, which costs everyone a lot of money. This is the opportunity that we have, not only to refresh the outsides of the buildings, and you may notice that there are actually, new windows have already been installed, but to go back through and rethink the landscaping and put something attractive, but a little less water-using. So that's one of our goals for the exterior. If you've seen the interior courtyards, there isn't a barbecue and seating area. The play area needs to be refurbished, and the community center is very small. So one of the significant impacts of this project is to provide a nice, large community center where our resident services can happen, and that the tenants can, you know, rent out for a birthday party and, and enjoy bringing their friends into that community. The insides of the units are just as tired as the outside. Kitchen cabinets have not been replaced since day one, which is over 30 years ago. So that's the kind of improvement we want to see.
Well, maybe we can give you a little bit of that facade money to paint the building up.
I want to bring money from outside of the city of Vista to be spent in Vista on this. And I just wanted to add that Community Housing Works believes in hiring local businesses. We are doing our GC bidding process right now, and we do have a requirement to hire locally.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
Yeah. Is this the property that recently had a solar panel demonstration? Yeah, and I, I was invited to go out to help with the dedication of that. And, and I was impressed with the, just the cohesiveness of the, of the community within the complex. And the biggest highlight to me was seeing that this big project, it was a huge project, they put solar panels on all the parking structures that will basically provide electrical power to the units. And in doing this, the company that came in actually trained some of the residents who were unemployed or underemployed, and they... who were unemployed or underemployed, and they walked away with the skill that they're, now they're out on other jobs. So I saw a whole sub-community of growth right there in that. And to see this happening there will even add to the vitality of that community, I think. So, and for us to be able to help you get this tax-exempt loan to do that project and not even be on the hook for it, I mean, that's even another plus. So, thank you.
That's even better. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, then, if there's no other questions, then I would entertain, close of public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move for close of public hearing and move for adoption.
And I can second that.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing number four, our last public hearing. This is a nuisance abatement hearing of 705, 707, and 709 Hilo Way in Vista. I believe we're going to have the report by Pete Grover. We'll have the report, and then we can hear from the speakers.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Martin Grover, Assistant City Attorney. With me is Mr. Senior Code Officer Don Belda, or Steve Belda, I'm sorry, Don Blaha, and also Dave Wilson, the city, or city code enforcement officer manager. This is a nuisance abatement hearing pursuant to Chapter 3.06 of the Vista Municipal Code involving three properties generally identified as 705, 707, and 709 Hilo Way. Photos number one gives a general picture of the properties in question in relationship with where they are to the, in the city of Vista, between Mar Vista and Thibodeau off of the 78. The next photograph is a closer photograph of the, of the property, it's still pretty high in the air. But what I wanted to point out here is the primary property with most of the problems are in the far-right corner, the property on the far-right. The center property is, also has some violations as well. The main structure, or the main entrance into the property is off of Hilo Way there, at the bottom right-hand corner. That main structure where the red light is, is the primary residence, and we don't seem to have any problems with that residence. However, at the top corner of the 709, on the left-hand side, is a secondary residence. There's a secondary residence where Mr. Coonan lives. And just to give you some perspective, you have pictures in your, in your handout, so I wanted to kind of point it out in the overhead. Just above the primary residence is the steel structure that you'll see to the right, a little bit down there. And then to the right of that, in the right-hand corner, is a mobile home. And down below the primary residence is a second mobile home, down lower. Okay. And so we'll go through the various violations as they continue. The properties are located in the E1 Estate Zone, which allows one single-family residence per lot or building site. And in this case, the property that's designated 709 Hilo Way has two residential units. We have no permits shown for that second residential unit at the top of the page, top of the property line there. According to the official records maintained by the San Diego County Recorder, ownership of the properties for the two left properties on the right-hand, on the left-hand side are Margaret W. Coonan Living Trust, and the primary property, the 709 Hilo Way, is owned by Robert Coonan Family Trust. In June 2010, code enforcement received a complaint from one of Mr. Coonan's neighbors about people living in a mobile home on the property. Code enforcement officer Don Blaha conducted an inspection of the Coonan properties from the neighbor's property, verifying the presence of the mobile home. He also observed the second mobile home, the steel structure, and the recreational trailers and campers stored on the property. He also observed steel frames, the steel frame structure under construction, that's been under construction for a number of years. And there's no record or permit either for the mobile homes on the property, or the steel structure, and a number of other structures on the property as well. Even if an application had been made for the permits for the other structures, they would not have the homes, they would have not have been, not have been approved because of the limitation on the zoning restriction. City staff began to gather further information concerning the condition of the property using the satellite and street view images from Google Maps and the iStreet maps that we have on our city program. And we were able to determine that there's a large accumulation of junk and debris, buildings and structures without permits, and vehicles, inoperable vehicles. In November 2010, city staff met with Mr. Coonan to talk about the mobile homes and the recreational vehicles, and he admitted that in one of the mobile homes, he had been previously occupied, but the tenant had been evicted and it was now vacant. He claimed the other mobile home, the one in the far-right corner, had been used as a construction office, and that motor, and that the motor home that was on the property was used as a, by a relative to provide care to his ex-wife, his alien ex-wife. At the meeting, Mr. Coonan was asked if he would consent to an inspection of the recreational vehicles on his property, and he declined. The city attorney's office subsequently filed and obtained an inspection warrant to allow the code enforcement officers to inspect the properties. The inspection was conducted on December 21st. I know your staff report says December 10th, but that's an error. It should have been the 21st. It should also be noted that the photos that you'll be seeing later will have a stamp on there that have February 2nd, 2007 as the date, and that's a misprint based on the fact that the computer, the camera date was not properly set. It should be noted that since the inspection, Mr. Coonan, neither Mr. Coonan nor anyone else has made any attempt to obtain permits for the building's electrical and plumbing code violations, nor has he requested anyone to come back out and inspect the property to verify that the trash and debris and the junk has been properly either stored or removed from the property. Following the, that inspection, Mr. Belda had made a inspection this year in going out to the property to deliver the notices, and noticed that most of the conditions were still present on the property. And then on September 26th of this year, city planner Patsy Chow and I met with Mr. Coonan to discuss the violations and the conditions, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get any cooperation from Mr. Coonan at that time. What I'd like to do now is go through the pictures, one by one, and just kind of focus on the improvements. This is the steel structure that was, I mentioned earlier.
Can I ask a question? Sure. The grass there is green. So when was this picture actually taken?
This picture here?
Yeah, any of these pictures. I noticed they're all green.
All the photographs were the December 21st inspection during the inspection, during the inspection warrant.
December?
Of 2010.
2010, that was?
Almost two years ago.
Two years ago. Okay. Good enough.
Okay. This basically is a picture of the steel structure. It's a pretty massive steel structure that's next to the primary residence that we have no problem with, but that's been constructed. Again, there's been no permits for this, this structure whatsoever. In discussing it with Mr. Coonan, the representation he made to us was that it was going to be a assisted living facility for six or fewer adults. However, he believed that he wasn't required to have a permit from the city to build this structure, that he could get his permits from the state. But he has no permits from the state or, nor the city. This is the second picture of the structure. In the foreground here, there's some pictures of the, of building materials. It's hard to tell whether those are like the concrete curbs that you use around gardens, or maybe some kind of a paving system. Wasn't clear to us, but there's large stacks of this throughout the property. Go ahead, next picture. Again, another picture of the structure. You can see the beam coming across the, to the, from left to right, showing the extensiveness of this, this structure still, still under construction. I would point out the fact that they had a wheel, an axle and a couple of wheels, but no vehicle nearby. This shows how the structure is over a depression in the ground, and below there is a large tank that Mr. Coonan described as his bomb shelter. So this wasn't, you know, this isn't just a small building that's being erected with some two-by-fours, but this is some significant, you know, engineering that's involved in constructing this building. Again, the steel structure, in the foreground, you see some additional junk and debris just kind of scattered around the property. Next picture. And this is a picture of more accumulation of junk and debris. The truck in the foreground has no, no window in the, has been broken out. There's a lot of junk and debris in the bed of the truck and around the, the structure. Behind the truck is a large work shed. Again, there's been no, no permits for this structure as well. An example of some of the junk and debris scattered around the property. You've got a bathtub near the, on the property, without any explanation of why that's there. More of the junk and debris. This is those pavers, again stacked, and they've been there for quite a long time. You can tell from the growth of the plants over the top of the pavers. More junk and debris. This is the, the mobile home that's up in the far-right corner of the property that he was using as a construction trailer. This is the, the steel structure, and in the foreground, you have more of those paver items being stacked. This is the, the house Mr. Coonan lives in. It's a yellow house. It's relatively new, newer. In the foreground, there's a sink, a bathroom sink, and around the building is more just junk and debris stored around the property. Again, another example of some junk and debris. The pavers in the background, there's the, the box for a truck that goes in the bed of the truck, and it looks like a part of a bed liner for a truck in the background there.
Can you go back?
Sure.
To the picture? Another one. No. Well, that wood is. No, the other way. No. One more. One more. Right there.
This one, okay.
Is that still there? That trash right there?
I can't tell you right now if that was there. I haven't been on that property personally, but it was there on that date in December. And it's an example of more trash and debris that Mr. Coonan simply just locates on the property.
I went there yesterday, and it wasn't there.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Next picture. This is a camper shell. This pole in front of the camper shell is a, has a TV antenna on top of it, and it's got the wire going into the, the window, which leads us to believe that it's used for, for habitation purposes, or could be used for habitation purposes. Next, next picture. This is just another side of the camper shell. In the, in the foreground there is a, is a refrigerator that was underneath the camper shell. I know in Mr. Coonan's package that he provided today, apparently it's, it has something to do with the camper shell. It's a, but again, it's, it appears to be an appliance, what you would find in a normal house, but it's out in the weather, and I'm not sure it operates or not. This is the motor home that was next to Mr. Coonan's house. In this case, this motor home doesn't have a current license on it. It was used as, for the caretaker while he was taking care of the, Mr. Coonan's wife, which we learned from Mr. Coonan directly, which, again, would be illegal under our zoning code. This is an example of one of the vehicles that's on the property, unlicensed. This too is another vehicle on the, on the property, unlicensed. None of the vehicles that are pictured here are currently licensed. This appears to be an operable vehicle, but a closer look at that license, we did a close-up on that, and the last time it was registered was 2002, so you couldn't operate that on the street. In the background is the second mobile home that was occupied by the primary residence originally, and then it was moved over by the storage shed, a large storage shed. This is more example of the junk and debris. This is a, another inoperable vehicle being used partially as storage, storaging, storing junk and debris in the, in the bed of the truck. This is the side of the storage shed. There's a lot of materials, building-type materials that are stored outside. I'm not sure if they're of any value now, but behind the, the wooden materials behind that is the, he's got a large collection of tires. Up on the roof, there's, appears to be lawn furniture or tables thrown up there for storage purposes, I guess. This is an example of some of the junk and debris that's in front of the house. This is Mr. Coonan's house. Again, there was no permit or any plans approved for this house to be constructed there. It's not to say that it couldn't be approved. One thing they would have to do is change the boundary line of the property so that it would be on a separate lot, because you can only have one residence per lot. This is a, appeared to be a chicken coop, but there was no chickens inside, but it's over 120 square feet. Again, no permits or plans for that structure.
Excuse me?
Yes.
When I went there yesterday, he has a lot of chickens in there.
Okay.
Chickens.
At the time that this picture was taken, there was no chickens.
Okay.
And just another view of the, of the side. Again, it's, the roof area is greater than 120 square feet, so it would require a permit. And another picture of the, of the structure. This is a shed, appears to be a storage shed for paint and solvents. We didn't try to determine what, what the, what were in the canisters, only the, the fact that there's a large structure, again, that would need a permit for, for it to exist. This is a gazebo that was built on the property. It looks like it was built about the same time as the house. Again, over 120 square foot, so it would have needed a permit. This is a, an entryway into the work shed, the large work shed that he has there. Pretty substantial. You can tell by just the, the framework around the walls and, and that sort of stuff. And here is, inside the work shed, you can see the major beams across there. There's electrical wiring that's done in there, so... electrical wiring that's done in there. So again, without any permits. This shows some of the power equipment that's in there. You can see on the left hand side a couple of the power cords and the plugged into outlets to generate power. Excellent. And this just shows how far back this the structure goes. And it's again, not a small structure, but a rather substantial structure. This is an example of some of the wiring that the code officers were able to to find on the property. It's kind of a mixed match of just splicing and plugging in here and there. I'm not sure it's energized or not. But the the rule of thumb is you always treat it as it is energized for safety purposes. This is a picture of a landscape light. The box or your your wiring would be secured and protected from the weather is exposed. Again, I'm not sure it's the light's not on, but I'm not sure it's energized or not. But again, it would be treated as as an energized light. There's a example of a box. It looks like an electrical box. It could be for for any purpose. But again, there was we have no permits for any electrical work on the property. This shows it looks like a combination of water lines and electrical lines underneath the metal structure. And but they just again, there's no permits for this. So there's been a lot of a lot of work done out here, but without the need of a permit.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On that, those pipes that are there, those are not regular pipes that you use for water as far as for building. It looks to me those are just temporarily while he was working on the building. Do you think?
It could be. He never explained why he had water lines there.
Yeah, those aren't really water lines for a building. Those are just-
They look like irrigation lines.
I think when he was doing the construction, he probably needed water there. And it looks like he that's what he did. So.
This is an example of the where you would have a power meter. Again, I'm not sure it's energized, but the work itself, the normally the normal process is you bring in plans, you get your permit, and then you do your work, not do your work and then get your plan. So next picture. This is inside the bomb shelter or one of the shelters underneath the the metal structure. Again, there's there's wiring in there. There's temporary lighting in there. Creating a risk. This is the appears to be a filter for I'm assuming for the pond that's adjacent in the background. And it's it's got the pump to it, which would require electrical wiring as well. No permits for the the pump, the plumbing of this this structure either. This appears to be some kind of a pump or a well of some kind. There's obviously there you've got the the water lines there. And then you've got the power behind it. Again, there's there's no permits for this work. And this was behind found behind the the mobile home or motor home. You can see his residence in the background. On this side, you can see the toilet. This property is not hooked up to sewer. It's in septic right now. So and I believe, and I don't know if you can tell, but it looks like water service to this structure was via a hose. Next picture. And then he had the urinal installed as well. These photographs substantiate the violations listed in the notice of abatement. Staff is requesting that the city council order the property owners to either abate all of the violations listed in the notice within 30 days, or enter into an agreement with the property owners within 30 days to establish an abatement process or schedule to correct all violations within 90 days from the date of the agreement. If the owners fail to comply with either of these options, the city manager is authorized under the code to contract with a private contractor, abate the public nuisance. And then after the work is done, the staff would bring back to the a report to the city council to authorize the the cost of the abatement to be put on the property tax rolls and collect it that way. Another alternative would be to seek a receivership for the property who would actually go in, get a court order to take over the property, make all the corrections that are necessary, and then sell the property in order to be repaid, to pay off the debt for that property, for the work. And I would be open for any questions you have.
I have two speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first and then? The two speakers are Joyce Sutherland and Robert Coonan. But I guess I need to know who's the owners. We can give you probably more than the three minutes, whoever the owner is. And then whoever who is the who is the public the commenter that would get the three minutes. So who's going to take the as the owner? You come up here. You need to come up here and speak here.
May I add something with that, Mayor? I know I know this gentleman takes medication. So I hope you don't get too excited here, sir, because I know he's got a heart problem here.
I'm not hearing anything, is what I said. We had trouble with it. And I've been having ear problems. I had a procedure done six months ago. I had one done about three weeks ago. And I'm supposed to have one done in December.
Are you the sir, are you the the main speaker? Are you going to be the main speaker on this?
I can't hear you, ma'am.
You can't hear me? Are you going to be the main speaker?
No. Well, since I found-
And how long do you think that you'll you'll take?
Am I going to be the main speaker?
Yes. Do you need like five minutes or?
Well, I have a daughter that can well, I'm not even have I'm having trouble hearing her too. I haven't heard already. I haven't heard anything here. Now, I'm doing pretty good because I can read lips.
Are you are you Joyce?
Missed that.
So are you going to be the main speaker, Joyce?
What I was first let him because he's- What I was looking for right now is that we have a prima facie-
Just wait. Joyce, the the owner will have more than three minutes. They can have more than three minutes. But then the the additional speaker will just get the three minutes. So which one of you wants to be the main speaker? You do? Okay. So then you'll Mr. Coonan, you'll have three minutes. He can't hear me.
Okay. No, he can't. He said he couldn't listen. Okay. Yeah, we have the property centered. All of the photos, we did not address. And I'm not prepared, which is why I kept sending my father up. And I'm the trustee.
Speak right into the mic so we can hear you. So we can hear you.
I'm the trustee on the property. My name is Joyce Sutherland. This is my father. The photos were not individually addressed here. And I'm not prepared to individually address them. That's why I sent my father up.
Speak right into the microphone. Yeah, there you go. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. So you so you don't have to keep turning. Just kind of face us and talk. Okay?
Well, I didn't want to be the main speaker primarily because I don't want to address the codes. I don't know that much about the codes. I do know that we're having a speaker problem here. I do know that there's a there's a lot of stuff on the property. A lot of stuff has been shown. And the photos today are gone. They have been removed. I won't address the codes. I said that. I don't know them. Some of the photos that were drunk junk classified as junk is actually a bee strainer. The refrigerator is actually propane refrigerator for a mobile home. My primary stand myself personally is that the city now, there's been a lot of issues on how their photos were obtained, when they were obtained, the accuracy of the timestamp. I have a personal issue of any governing body obtaining evidence against private citizens through Google. All those are separate issues, and I'm not going to address them today for sure. Now, the city of Vista, by their own, said that these parcels, all the parcels, it's one parcel on the three parcels, okay, were a constituted a public nuisance. This was what the hearing was brought on. This is what the action was brought on, as opposed to the working with each violation individually. The hearings said as this property constitutes a public nuisance. So I read the California codes as to what and you should have the letters. I'm not supposed to move my head.
No, your hands are okay.
Okay, my head.
It's your head, yeah.
It goes like, okay. So anyways, I we did submit letters today in opposition of the abatement. The city of Vista has put put the abatement based on a public nuisance. Now, this property does not fall underneath the legal category of a public nuisance. There may be code violations, but it's simply not a public nuisance. The if according to their code, and you have this in front so I don't have to read because I haven't had any water for a couple hours.
Is it the packet? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the packet.
It's the packet. It's the opposition. One, two, three. Third paragraph down addresses Civil Code 3479 and says specifically, what would constitute a public nuisance? Now, you can't take one code. What constitutes public, should I read? Okay, what constitutes public nuisance, anything that's interest to the health, including but not limited to the illegal sale of controlled substance, or is indecent or offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property, or unlawfully obstructs the free passage or use in the customary manner of any navigational lake or river or bay, stream, canal, or basin, or any public park, square, street, or highway is a nuisance. Now, you can't grab one code, as the city did and cited, without going to the second code to make it inclusive, which is a public nuisance. California Section Code 3480, a public nuisance is one which affects, at the same time, an entire community or neighborhood or any considerable number of persons, although the extent of annoyance or damage inflicted upon individuals may be unequal. Now, code cite United versus the United States versus Bushney and Sons, goes on to define a public nuisance cases have always been contained within well-defined geographic boundaries, linked to impairment to property or injuries resulting from such effects. Resulting from, yeah, I'm a bad typist. Such effects as the spillage of sewage or chemicals into waterways, emission of noxious fumes from copper foundries that destroyed forest, orchards, and crops, dumping garbage into the oceans that foiled beaches, irrigation projects that contributed to flooding, construction bridges that interfered with navigation, and pollution of lakes by vessels transporting oil. Further down, there is another site. Okay, I don't have to. The point I I have here, there I reference to the the violations. The city has been fighting. This has been an ongoing fight. The found the metal frame, the sores, the this has been going on forever. The my contention is that this hearing simply should not have been brought and as a public nuisance, period. We went as we went around the neighborhood. We have signatures, 21 signatures from each of the attached neighbors. We have a parcel map that we supplied that shows where these properties are and all the neighbors attached. And did and they did not consider this a nuisance. This is not a public nuisance. It's not a public nuisance. The public can't see it. The public can't unless you use Google, then you can see it. You're not going to see it from the street. You're not going to walk by it. You're not going to hear it. This may be a city issue in terms of these pictures. Things have changed out there significantly since those pictures were shown. So I'm in objection to the abatement because the city brought the abatement on the issues of public nuisance, and it does not fall within the category of a public nuisance, period. And that's my position.
Okay.
Thank you.
So does Robert want to speak then?
This is not on the record, but- What'd he say?
It's gonna be it's on the record because you're on you're-
Well, all I did is that I do have a lot of junk that's laying around. I'm willing to get rid of all the junk. I'm willing to follow the zoning course. I had a problem with the city when I mentioned one man's name. And that soon as I mentioned that name, all thing went to that was with Grover here about 12, 14 years ago, when he first got the job. And I even forgot the guy's name now. But he's he's anyways, what happened? We had problems with the sewer construction. And even up until last week, their their sewer people called me up and want to run a TV camera again after three times. They want to go to fourth time. So this problem has been tailing for this long. And that's that metal building you're seeing. I had quit that metal building when they would no longer give me a sewer permit. Now, when the sewer permit I looked into, somebody from the city went into my parcel backs and fed me correspondence that went along with, God, I forgot this guy's name. But I've got the correspondence that this fellow was getting pumping in his property when I was not. So I had been I applied for a two six bed and under project after this was built as a there's a permit for this foundation. And I was a contractor, both engineering and building. And I used to represent people as a lobbyist in front of the city constantly. But things kind of went sour on for me. So what I've done is I've been trying with this fellow right here. And when I go to the building and I ask him, I said, well, look, what is this here? Go see Grover. Go see Grover. Go see Grover. So Grover's got it in his hands. And whoever pushing, I don't know. Grover, who's the guy's name that I always I told you about that's getting benefits? You've got it in your records? Anyways, what this fellow has done, he's applied. He's a an ex engineer working for the city. And he does concrete estimate, I mean estimating for you guys that would be under contract. I saw a contract he had by the fire department to look into something. And you all must know him because he's here. Well, anyways, he has gotten things done that I was not allowed to do. Grover's got them. I sent them to Grover on a thing that says and he went into a couple people that he worked for as a lobbyist. And he got okay to pump out of different plots lots, you know, he's he's he would get the okay. At the same time, I'm negotiating with the city. And I'm not getting anything. I'm getting letter, we won't pump. You have to do gravity feed. You have to do this. So then I went out and I checked on my own to get some pumps that I was thinking about trying to get done with these guys. So I went out to an outfit, McDonald Pumping Company. And he says, hey, I can give you a lot of names of a lot of people that are pumping, just like you're I'm just like you're asking. And you're not getting it. Brooks McCavinol. Brooks Kavanaugh is the guy's name. The guy has got a tremendous amount of power in getting things done. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven things done. And I and and I don't have all the letters, but somebody from the city came down and gave me a packet of letters. So with that letters, I wrote in for freedom of information. I said, look, give me every correspondence that you have between Brooks Kavanaugh with the old mayor, not you guys, with the old mayor. Give me all that correspondence. They always come back and says, we don't have any. And you're too vague. Well, I gave his name and I gave the thing. And how much vaguer can you be go? And it was too much problem. Now, I've got- Now, I've got them copies, I don't have the night, because the night I was going to come in, because they didn't give us enough time to do anything, because half of what they said, look, I looked up their pictures, two, two hundred, I mean, two thousand.
Sir, listen, if you, if you're proceeding and cleaning some of this up and taking care of some of this, can we get like in 30 days? That would be.
Well, Mayor, I think what we'd want to do is at least enter into a memorandum of understanding within 30 days, and I think as long as maybe an alternate recommendation, as long as staff is satisfied that he's making progress on cleaning up his property, then we may not take a full abatement action, but if he's not making progress, then we would make a recommendation to the council to go ahead and allow the abatement of the property, with the exception of him working with staff and making progress.
He can't, he can't hear any of that, he said. I don't know how, if his daughter hears. Joyce, can you explain that to him, what he's just said, or do you want, how can we get, how can we have him understand?
We've got more, we've got more stuff to find out under freedom of information with these guys, so can we postpone this to a later date?
You know, and just to clarify, staff's recommendation would be to abate the nuisance. However, until taking formal action, as long as he's making progress towards removing the abatement, or the nuisance, then we would allow that to continue. That would be a suggestion. Can I add to that?
Yeah, and then Councilmember Brunkie, and I have Frank and all of you, so they'll want to speak, do you want to listen to what they have to say here?
I'm going to write, did you hear what they had to say? You said staff's, really, I'm going to write it just to make sure. I'm sorry, one more time.
Before you this evening is a resolution concerning the abatement of the nuisance, and the city manager, I believe, is suggesting a slight change to 2A1, which requires that a memorandum of understanding be entered into within 30 days, and that all violations be corrected within 90 days from the date of executing the memorandum of understanding, or should satisfactory progress be made to city's satisfaction such later time as city may determine, so that if satisfactory progress is being made and it can't all be done within 90 days, the time can be extended in the city's discretion as long as we see a good faith effort and progress being made.
Would it have to come back to us again then?
No, it would not.
Okay, so do you want to, did you get, did you get that to write down?
I wrote brief notes, I'm not exactly sure if, as if we're making progress, because we're in the process of making progress. Do we get memos? Do I get a memo on this?
This will be written down, right?
Yeah, really, I'm not trying to be a smart eye like.
No, it'll all be written down for you.
There'd be a memorandum of understanding, which would clarify what progress would need to be made at what intervals.
Okay, so am I understanding that if we at this point start to make, we at this point are showing, which we are, because with reference to the pictures they had, this city had, we, our show, have had made progress, we are making progress, so my understanding is to you, my understanding is that there's an extension of continuation of time as long as we continue to make progress as to the abatement action, is that right?
Let me just say that this was a suggestion, if the council chose to take it, I think maybe it's better for council to have comments and then.
All right, let's listen to the council comments, then we'll come back to that, okay? So hold, hold your thought for a minute.
Yeah, I really apologize, but I'm really not familiar with.
Okay, let's, I have, the council members all want to talk, so let them say their thing, and then we'll come back to you, and then you will get a memo on the end of what.
Or should we continue the hearing until we get grass?
They don't, they don't, they won't continue the hearing, they want to, they want to speak, so let's do that first. So, Mayor Brucham Brunkie, followed by Councilmember Lopez, followed by Councilmember Coles and John Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, this is the biggest abatement I've ever seen on my time in the council. I am a frame of mind that I see two residences here, one that is approved, and one that possibly could be approved if it was brought up to code and we were comfortable with that. So I see no reasons to displace anybody from a residence, so if we can get that going, then that would be wonderful. As to the, all the other items, I would think that we could have a lot of that offered there within 30 to 90 days. The large metal structure is going to take more than 90 days, but it's got to be removed. So, there's just so many buildings that could, that need to be removed from this site, and I know it's going to take more than 90 days, so I would be in agreement if we had an understanding with these individuals, that if we subdivided this property, brought that, made sure that one house is up to code, it could stay, everything else goes, everything, and in a timely fashion. And I guess my, by timely fashion, I mean probably the metal structure is going to take more than 90 days, as some of these other ones. My question to the residents there is, I look at this, are we looking at anything hazardous? Is there, is there fuels and oils?
No, in fact, in the, in the note that I have is, I'm cramming all this together, is we actually do have an environmental hazardous, an environment inspector from the Department of Environmental Health that comes out, because there is a pond, not a pool, but a pond where there are fish. So they come out once a year and they inspect the pond water, the air water, the air quality, the.
But they're not expecting, inspecting the rest of these properties?
The ponds there on the property, so it's the air, they don't just stand over the pond, it's the air quality that affects the entire environmental, that immediate area.
I appreciate you saying that they inspect the pond, and I can appreciate that.
But no, there's nothing hazardous out there, it, no, no.
Well, I just think we need to move on this.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Councilmember Lopez.
Well, I went out the other day.
Speak right in there, Frank.
I went out the other day, and I went through everything, because this man has stuff that is valuable there, and if it was mine, I wouldn't want to sell it, you know, I would hang on to some of it. I don't know if any of you happen to go down there and inspect like the big building in the corner? There's nobody living in there, there's absolutely nobody living in there, nobody would live in that thing, you know? And so, what I noticed on some of these pictures, that he has made a lot of effort in cleaning, but for the, did we receive any complaints from any of the neighbors around? Is there letters of complaints from the neighbors?
We did receive a complaint, yes, recently.
How many?
One neighbor.
Just one neighbor, okay. So, to me, 90 days to clean this mess up, excuse me, I said that, but to clean it up is not enough. I think that the suggestion that Patrick said, as we go, as they're cleaning, as long as they're doing it, give them up to six months to get rid of all that stuff, because you're not going to get rid of that stuff, I'm telling you, in 90 days. There's a lot of stuff out there, but a lot of it is good stuff, and so, and he's an elderly gentleman, and it's going to take him time. So, in your thoughts, go as high as six months, and if he doesn't have it by then, it's too bad.
Councilmember Coles.
Yeah, the issue of code violations, and this, I think the property owners have known about this for several years, that there were compliance issues, and I'm not sure of the progress made since the time the photographs were taken, but I think staff needs to have access to make observations, to observe whether there has been mitigation that has taken place, and if so, they need to be given credit for that. But code compliance really has to do as much with the whole city of Vista as the neighborhood and the property itself, because the electrical wiring, and maybe those things have been cleaned up, but they, they looked, that looked pretty dangerous to me, if a child were to get in the, in the yard and go running through and get electrocuted, I mean, they're just, those are, those are nuisances that, that, that are not necessarily fenced off or inaccessible to children or other passersby. I think the suggestion that we provide a little extension of the time based on progress being made is reasonable, but again, I don't want to see this go on for another year or anything like that, and so, progress being made is the key. I think an end result, I don't know if we want to put a date specific, the inspectors could tell us if their, the progress is being made enough to get it done in three months or six months, but I don't have a problem with putting a, we need to have an end, an end time to getting this brought into compliance.
What I can tell you is that I do know, because I did bring this up to my father, because of children, you know, if you have live electrical wires out there and you have kids running around and they might get, somebody could hurt, anybody could get hurt. So rather, that, like I said, I don't know anything about the city codes, I really don't. So I would be so out of my territory to even address the code issues per issue. I do know that there is no live electrical wires out there, I know we have a trailer that we've been, I've walked through the property, my, you know, to see exactly what's going on, the junk and household items, we have a chair, that we've got to get rid of.
Also about the refrigerator.
Actually, that isn't a refrigerator, but I, but maybe the, it actually is.
A child could get in there, maybe, or?
I'll check, I will check, we have a, we have a, that goes to the motorhome, or mobile home, it's propane, it may, does it lock? It may have a lock, I'll check, I'll check.
Well, anyway, I have, we have other.
That's part of the problem, I mean.
We have other speakers.
Ma'am, I think the bottom line is, there's a lot of non-permitted structures, there's some stuff that needs to be cleaned up. We don't know if there's power going through those wires, you say there isn't, that's fine. Let our people get on the, on the property, photograph it, so we have a starting point.
Current.
Current, yeah, and we can, you know, monitor the progress from here. If you're willing to do that, then I think what you're hearing from us is we're willing to give you some time and we're willing to work with you. So let us on the property, we're going to get point A, where we're at today, and then in five or six months, we set a timestamp of whatever, March 1, April 1, this has got to be cleaned up, this is where we got to be, and if you're agreeable to that, we're agreeable to giving you the extra time.
Did you hear any of this?
Do you want extra time, sir?
Yes, we want extra time.
Okay, then let us on the property, let our staff on the property, let us photograph, give us a starting point, and then we move forward, and we monitor on a regular basis, so it can't be like six months out, you can come out and take a picture, you know, monthly or however much time they think they need to have in between.
So we can see that you're moving forward and making progress, and the hard thing will be the dividing the lots, the lot line, going through that whole.
Well, you know, that's, frankly, the lot line has been huge, this is, you know, this is a huge issue, like I said, I'm ill. Yeah, I, I am ill-prepared for it, and we would have to frankly probably have an attorney to deal with it, that really could actually talk to it.
You probably will, but that would be part of your going forward and progress, so you get one.
You know, we were going to, we couldn't decide whether we would have one here today or not.
Well, we don't need the attorney here, we just need you to make progress going forward in separating those two, those two lots, so that there's a house on each piece, each property.
That's, yeah, that's been a huge, that's been a goal, frankly, for quite a long time, it's just.
Well, the time's getting shorter.
So we do have an extension of time, is that correct? Am I correct in assuming this?
Can I ask the council for clarification? I was going to say that, you know, if we were to enter into this MOU with the Coonins, staff's perspective would be that we would, we would have an accelerated timeline for the junk and the debris, and the inoperable vehicles, and the structures, we'd also probably have a longer timeline to allow them to get the lot line adjustment, to bring certain things into being permitted, and the steel structure would probably take a little longer to dismantle and to remove, but that, what I'm hearing from council is that six months for the junk, the debris, the structures, and all of that would need to be removed within that timeframe, is that correct?
Six months or less?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so you're saying, I'm sorry.
What if, Patrick, I mean, what if he's right at the end and he needs another month?
Well, then maybe, maybe he'll have to come back and we'll look at it again, but we want to see that he's making some good progress. Okay, attorney, wait, Frank, I need, quiet for a second, attorney would like to say something.
Sure. Again, with reference to the resolution that's before you today, it has two options already built into it, and I'm going to suggest a minor modification to the second option. One option is to correct everything in 30 days. The second option is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city, establishing the city's right of access, and a mutually agreed-upon work plan to correct all violations listed in the notice to abate nuisance attached hereto, within 90 days from the date of executing the memorandum of understanding, or such later date as the city may determine in its sole discretion. That allows us to create a work plan in conjunction with him, has to be done within 30 days, or the other op, or the other provision applies, which is of course much more significant. The work plan then can set timelines, access conditions, and make sure that everything's going forward, if things stop, then we can call a halt to that process.
Okay. Can I speak, please?
Do we need a motion as to that?
Excuse me, can I speak for a moment, please?
Just, no, wait, just a moment.
At, at a point we will, and I'll be happy to reread it, otherwise it's as printed in your book, but I made a couple of little changes to reflect the conversation up here.
Okay.
And I'll reread it when you're ready to make a motion.
Okay, do I have, you guys want to speak, and then, and just hold, I have Frank Lopez on here again.
Are you comfortable with that?
Well, I'm, you know, Frank, honestly, I would be comfortable before I would say yes, no, or you would say yes, no, this is really more than I was prepared to deal with. I would be comfortable with a continuance of a hearing to have, no, you're not going to do another hearing? No, okay. So will we get a written memo?
Exactly.
Exactly, so I can give it to an attorney? I mean, clearly, we're not going to go on my notes, because they're pretty scattered.
Yeah.
You are, Mr. Coonan, the owner, I believe you're probably the owner as the trustee.
Right, right.
Will enter into a formal written agreement with the city defining what is to happen and when, and you will get to negotiate that with the city, but there will be reasonable but relatively short timelines attached to that memorandum, so you will be participatory in actually creating the plan for the abatement.
You are your attorney, right?
Right.
Yes, that will have to be done within 30 days of tonight, to make, to come to that agreement, and then we'll follow through on that agreement for actually getting all the work done.
Now, am I supposed to respond here? Because I don't know what I'm responding to.
You don't need to.
You don't need to.
It's probably what the council's going to do.
Okay.
So, counsel, I would entertain a motion, then.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
And close the public hearing?
To close the public hearing, and to go along with the second recommendation with the amendment says expressed by our legal counsel.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so.
Do you want me to reread the?
Do you want to put it in the record? Yeah.
We'll reread Section 2A1 of the resolution, which will read, "Enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city, establishing city's right of access, and a mutually agreed-upon work plan to correct all violations listed in the notice to abate nuisance, attached hereto and incorporated herein, within 90 days from the date of executing the memorandum of understanding." of understanding, or at such later time as city may determine in its sole discretion." Period.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. That motion carries unanimously, so.
Now, the question, which is an administrative question, is when and how soon do I get a copy of the memo of?
Mr. Grover?
I can meet with the, the property owners and work out the memorandum of understanding with them, as soon as they're, they're available.
The memo from the hearing, the decision on the hearing tonight.
Oh, the, the resolution?
The resolution, thank you.
That should be available within a day.
Okay.
And how will she get it?
It's available through the city clerk, we can email it to you if you'd like, or you can come in and pick it up.
Okay, I could just walk in tomorrow and get it?
You should call first, because we have to actually-
Have to draft it.
Rewrite the first page, and then we'll be able to provide it to you. But we have to print, actually, what I just said.
Okay.
Okay.
We're done.
Okay, moving on. It's getting late, we're going to go to our, we don't have any oral communications, so we're going to go to our council, no, council comments, right? Do we have oral communications?
We do now.
Wait, we do now, hold on. No, Cliff Kaiser.
I have to excuse myself. Am I good?
Okay, go ahead, John.
Mayor, council, I applaud your efforts to clean up Vista. That was a very difficult discussion in public hearing, I applaud your efforts. But I also want to remind you of the, the email that I sent all of you regarding similar nuisance related to items on city property, all within a quarter mile of downtown Vista. So as we pull the plank from our own eye, before we tell the other person to pull this winter out, we should look at the problems that we have, that we have control, direct control over. Are you familiar with the email and the pictures that I'm referring to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so comments, Frank, Mr. Councilmember Lopez, sorry.
Comments? Everyone's looking down here. No, nothing.
Councilmember Coles.
Just quick, we had a regional solid waste management board meeting last week, and each year, we, each member city of the association is given a, a check based on the city's solid waste tonnage as a percentage of total tonnage, and it's for the purpose of environmental enhancements. I got a facsimile, Mr. Nelson got the real check, and this is some money that we can use for any environmental enhancements we want to do for our city, so.
Super.
It's a great check, forty thousand, forty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Super.
That's probably the highest one we've received.
We can, maybe we could paint something, some stuff with that.
Okay, Mayor Brucham Brunkie.
I just have you know that I did sit down with the EWA board today, and I was informed that a concern that I shared with this council at the last meeting about our representation on, on that board, will come before their, their policy committee at, at next month, so.
Okay, I have a couple of things. The Business Expo tomorrow, Wednesday, October 10th, two to seven, it's out in Business Park Two, oh dear, I put my glasses on to read the address, hold on, 2560 Progress Street, and so, you know, dropped by the city booth, has a booth there, so, and it has nine Vista microbreweries will be there, so if anybody wants to do that. As Kevin mentioned, the Vista Care's Business Walk, Thursday, October 25th, eight to two, call the chamber if you want to volunteer and walk with us to the businesses out in the business park, and, and thank them through their business, and see if there's anything we can do to help them. And the one last thing is kind of a fun thing, the Spirits of the Adobe, the paranormal experience is a two-hour walking tour offered Saturdays, seven to ten, October 20th and the 27th, and on Halloween by the San Diego Paranormal Research Society. The tour includes a history of the Adobe and the paranormal happenings that occur there. So for twenty dollars, and the proceeds go to the friends of the Rancher Buena Vista Adobe, but it might be kind of an interesting thing, maybe some of the paranormal people will show up while you're touring, especially on Halloween, wouldn't that be fun? Okay, so, yes, passing on to my city manager.
I just want to acknowledge in the back, we have our brand new fire chief, as of two days, Chief Rick Minnick, he's waving at the crowd.
Yay.
So we're very fortunate to have Chief Minnick replace Chief Fisher, and Chief Minnick has almost thirty-one years with the department, and was the only logical choice to assume the position, so congratulations to Chief Minnick.
We're still happy to have him.
Yes, we are. And on that note, we have Fire Prevention Week this week, and so on October 13th, at all the fire stations between two and six PM, they'll be open for tours and activities for kids and treats and things like that, so please stop by a station between two and six on Saturday the 13th.
Daryl, anything, or our city attorney?
Welcome, Chief Minnick, and that's all I have.
Okay, Kathy, Eric, nothing, okay, so, wouldn't that were adjourned? Eight oh seven.